Good evening, the time is five o'clock. I'd like to call this workshop. Oh, for Dylan?
Yes.
Okay. Of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees' Order. Meeting been duly called. Notice the meeting's been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. First item on the agenda, have a comments coming?
I do not.
All right. But with that, we will skip on to the next thing. Here we go. Next item on the workshop agenda, board workshop. Update Goal Number Five, maximize our use of resources for both current priorities, plans for the future, attendance boundary parameters of the process. Dr. Smith.
More thanks for being here tonight for this workshop. I think often when we think about maximizing resources for our current priorities and for future needs, we think about things like budget. We think about things like staffing. We don't always think about where we place kids and attendance, using attendance boundaries at school, but the resources like our facilities are a resources, are a resource to help us do our best work in all areas as well. So the work that goes into this impacts. Goal Number Two, exceptional learning for each and every student because of space, facility use, and design of the facilities that we have. So this is an important one for us to dive into because we wanna, we wanna use our resources, meaning our facilities wisely, for our students and the learning, for our staff and their teaching needs, and also for our community and stewardship and their dollars and facilities. So tonight, we're gonna ask you to engage in a, in a workshop where we're gonna have a lot of small group discussions and stuff, where we have to narrow down some parameters that you eventually will consider for adoption in the regular board meeting. These parameters are gonna help us determine those scenarios for you to take a look at regarding students and enrollment in schools. So that's the importance of these parameters. Kick the mic to take it away.
Well, and like I say, we're glad to have this discussion with you tonight. We're gonna try to set it up in a way where, where you get to have a lot of conversations, you get to ask questions, you get to have some discussion, and then ultimately, each of you will get to weigh in on kind of where you are on these parameters, which ones you think are the most critical that we get right as we establish new attendance boundaries. So tonight, we are discussing prioritizing parameters for new attendance boundaries. We are not here to approve maps tonight. We, we don't even have the proposed maps, they don't even exist yet. We are gonna give you some examples that came out of the work of our long-term facilities planning team and let you see kind of just some, some what ifs and some scenarios that they came up with, but, but we'll talk a little bit more about process. And so we really wanna talk about that tonight and give you an opportunity to have some great discussion. We'll come back later on in the evening, you'll, you'll need to have access to current attendance boundaries, and I'm gonna put those in the presentation also, just so everyone would have a document where they could see where the, where the current attendance boundaries lie. And then as you've seen many times over the last several years, you know, we are here tonight talking because we are growing districts, and with growth comes change. And so these were the enrollment projections that were presented at our fall mammographer's update back in October. You can see that the, the pressure points that we've had, Chisholm Trail and Tarver, but mostly being over capacity now, charter oak coming quickly, and led to the creation of bond projects that included two new elementary schools and additions and a third, which we'll talk about. So what was involved in adopting attendance boundaries? And it seems like we've done a lot of work on this already. I know the facilities committee, we've already given a couple of updates. We started this work back in September. We have, we have worked on attendance boundary parameters in thoughts twice now with our long-range facilities planning team, which is made up of members and parents, teachers, and staff. We have worked with our D-WIC committee, and we've also worked with our facilities committee on two different occasions so far. So right now, we, we've been developing process, we've been developing the timeline. The next step in this process is to adopt some parameters so that we can use those parameters to help us form proposals. Once the proposals are done, then we will go out to the community and have community feedback opportunities on those proposals. When we get that community feedback, we also will kind of simultaneously be developing the transition plan. So transition plan will be all those things like, will we grandfather students? How will we handle transfers at these new schools? How will special programs be impacted? What will we offer? What will we anticipate offering at each of the new campuses? Those sorts of things will be being developed simultaneously with the, with the new proposals. And then ultimately, we will get more feedback from our, from our community, we'll get more feedback from our long-range facilities planning team, we'll get more feedback from our facilities committee, and then we'll bring some options to you and potentially, hopefully, in February for you guys to weigh in on and make the final decision on. So those are kind of the next steps in the process. Any questions on that, that part of the... Looking forward to it. We're gonna have a lot of opportunities for feedback in addition to the feedback we've already got. I'm gonna, we're always gonna refer back to this, so this is the map that we presented, the timeline, the initial timeline we presented back in, in late August, early September. So far, we've been able to follow the steps. The only thing you'll see is an X on the facilities committee. I didn't plan well and had intended to go do an activity with the facilities committee in December, but we didn't have a facilities committee. But I wanted to leave it on there because I want everyone to see the same version and it's not an altered. So you can see, we're gonna have community input sessions in January, then we're going to internally do boundary recommendation development, work with the facilities committee, and bring it to you guys back in February for board action. Why do we need new elementary attendance boundaries? Like we said, as part of our bond program, we have, are going to build and open two new elementary schools. We're also adding some classroom, ten classrooms and some other spaces at Southwest Elementary. And we think this visual gives a good representation of how many seats that that bond work is actually gonna be able to add to the district. So with a, with a capacity of eight hundred at the two new, or the two new large elementaries and the additional seats at Southwest Elementary, our gross increase of elementary seats will be about seventeen hundred. We are going to close Miller Heights Elementary or take it offline as part of this process. And so with the current three hundred and sixteen students at Miller Heights Elementary, we're actually adding a net gain of about thirteen hundred and eighty-four seats where students can go whenever the construction is complete, we can move kids into the schools. Key vocabulary for tonight, there's really only two phrases. It's, it's one is making sure that we're all clear on tennis boundaries. It's the geographic area where a public school and assignment of students reside within that area, meaning each campus will have a designated area where the students are expected to go to school for that tennis boundary. The parameter, we, we're a little different. Belton has traditionally used the term parameter, and as we studied other school districts, and we study other school districts and how they handle and go through this process, not everyone uses the term parameter, so we wanted to make sure we're all on equal footing. That a parameter for us means a measurable factor forming one of a set that defines a system or sets a condition of its operation. So there will not, cannot be just one parameter that you make all of your decisions based on. But it is gonna be important that we, that we prioritize these parameters so that when it gets to making decisions on final proposals, we kind of know which way to lead. The parameters defined, this information has been a combination of a couple of things. Most of these are from Zonda Education. They are parameter ideas that other districts have used, they're parameter ideas that we've gone through in the past, as Zonda's worked with us before, and I think I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce. Matthew Pluck is with us tonight, and Matthew is part of the team from Zonda that is going to help us through this process of developing our maps and developing our data and making sure you guys have all the information you need. And we're not gonna take the time to read the definitions or even discuss right now, but there's eight parameters that have been defined. Seven of these came from Zonda and, and prior work that our district's done around parameters. One of these, the one about traffic impact was one that our long-range facilities planning team was thought was very important that we include. So I will say, one question that we're gonna ask you later tonight is, are there any parameters that aren't up that we should include in final consideration? And the way our process is set up, we can add those tonight. So before you, before you prioritize and before you have your final discussions, you'll have an opportunity, if there's a parameter that is something that's very important to you that's not, hasn't been included in this process, we can include those tonight. One thing that you have to understand too, so there may be multiple parameters at play, but not all parameters work well together. So if you decide that you're, if we decide as a district our number one parameter, parameter's gonna be balanced. We wanna balance enrollment, we wanna keep class sizes as small as we can across the entire district, we want to keep, not have anyone underutilized or we feel like overutilized. If balance is the key, then growth may not be able to be a separate priority because growth would mean, like, like the district did with Charter Oak. We opened Charter Oak with less than four hundred students, but by year four, it's, it's seven hundred students, and by year five or six, it's gonna be almost near capacity. So some of the, some of the, the parameters don't always work real well with each other. So that's something to consider as you, as you kind of work through this and you have your discussions tonight, is if your, if your top two parameters are in agreement with each other.
Can I ask a question on that too? What you're saying is Charter Oak was open with a mindset of growth, meaning it's not gonna be full to start, and there are gonna be other elementary schools that are larger than it. We're not saying everything has to be balanced. It was open with a growth parameter in mind on that one, that it will fill up based on the housing market right around it.
Yes. And so as you look through these, you can kind of see that, you know, necessarily balancing and family impact can be at odds with each other too. So if you say we're gonna, we're gonna keep everything as, we're gonna create conditions to balance campus enrollments, you might end up impacting more families than if you planned for growth or something. So capacity utilization is another one. Optimizing spacing capacity, so that's where the efficient use of buildings to reduce overcrowding when possible. That would be, if that were my number one, for me, that would mean I wanna get every class size as low as I can with these attendance boundaries, knowing that depending on future growth, there might be some, something that has to be adjusted here in the future. So now we're gonna kind of get you guys talking, get you guys thinking. We have some team members. You can see there are three sets of posters around the room. We're gonna call this lapping round, and we're not gonna spend a lot of time in each section, but what we wanna do is, is divide you guys, y'all can self-divide, I need two groups of two and one group of three. And so this will just be all board members. And we'll each start in a set. We're gonna try to go about three and a half or four minutes, and really what we want y'all to do during this is think about what you're seeing in front of you, and you're gonna list as many positive qualities, the things that would be good about using that parameter, but think of each one of them in the affirmative of why would this be an important parameter for us to consider? So, and when I say three and a half or four minutes, it's gonna be three and a half or four minutes at each station, not on each one. So you'll have about four, this will come to this whole activity, we're taking about ten or twelve minutes, and so you'll have about three and a half, four minutes at each, and then we'll rotate around.
So like, the stations would be like, this set is the station, that set's the station in that set.
Yes, yes. And so we'll rotate together after three and a half or four minutes. Is everybody ready? And we've got our riders are gonna go up to their stations, and if you guys will two groups of two, one group of...
You're with me, Bass?
And no idea's a bad idea on this. We're lighting it up and putting it off on the board.
I got it.
All right, we'll have about four minutes. Starting now.
Well, the other positive on balancing is utilization of resources. A lot of them go together. These actually go together very well. So family impact. Well, this goes into that. So that, yeah, because your kids are gonna go through the same system, you know, say elementary, middle school, high school. And then you can also add the teacher pattern along, but extracurricular. Extracurricular activities. Because like an athletic thing, those two you have, in your high, in your high school system, you're in a new place, and they're like, I know, that's not the system we're under.
Look at that! About two minutes, about two minutes. Assuming we can do it. All right, guys, we're gonna go and rotate clockwise. Remember, we're trying to brainstorm positive attributes for the reason why we wanna consider this one.
Hey, big Sam.
Consistently across the...
Well, yeah, so part of this goes on when we're talking about it, taking growth into consideration.
Does it go back to the first factor of the social media thing that we've talked about, is raise that positive...
Well, right, so I guess I assume that there's a balancing size, but maybe there's a balancing of lots of things.
We're moving to the next one.
What do they mean by, does this mean like not splitting kids, but we still school them?
Well, you never wanna do that.
Well, right, is that what that means? Okay, so I'll, so I'll do a different spin then, right? If they're not splitting with some... We had a first grader and a fifth grader.
Actually, I know several who did it though. Yeah, they, they had like a VHS and a LPHS, or yeah, super late, but, yeah.
Is that about a minute left?
Two high schools, four middle schools, the elementarys, all make perfect sense. But once we get to that special middle school, which it could be in the next cycle, I think at that point, this one's gonna be starting to become a little bit less important.
But that doesn't have a feeder pattern.
So I think you ought to put on there as a, as a point here, Sam, is that as middle school five shows, that's gonna be how more of a variety comes.
All right, we'll rotate to the last station. Last station.
Did he leave?
Where'd he go?
No, he didn't.
The school is there. You know, I mean, I don't know if there's a nickel out there. Kids in different, end up in different schools.
About thirty seconds, about thirty seconds. All right, guys, time's up. So we're gonna, we're doing great on time, so we wanna give an opportunity. I know a great question was asked about the difference or the similarities between optimizing spacing capacity and balance. And so I would be happy to, we can start a discussion on that, it kind of makes sense of it, because one thing about this process is, is y'all's process, and if we feel like two of them mean the same thing, we can always eliminate one as we get closer to prioritizing rankings later in the night. I'll kind of tell you, the discussions I've had is the optimizing space and capacity is kind of that, talking about efficient use of reduced buildings, I think that's what you take the whole, then to me, when you take the whole picture in and you talk about how many classrooms am I gonna have, and how many kids can I get in and still offer the programs I wanna offer in that case? Balancing, to me, gets more towards how many kids do I need to put in here and how many programs can I offer if I do that? I, I, doesn't, I wanna, I'll kick it over to somebody.
I feel like there's a lot of overlap between those two, and I think personally, I think we can eliminate one of them. I think when you're talking about it, I wanna be really clear about something that we said earlier. Balancing meaning similar enrollments in every elementary school does not mean that class sizes are exactly the same. We have state laws that, that tell us what maximum capacity for elementary class sizes should be up until a certain grade level, and so we follow those things. It could mean though, 'cause if you had it spaced out evenly across the district, doesn't necessarily mean that every class size is exactly the same, and I wanna be clear about that. We're not talking about balancing class sizes in this, we're talking about balancing overall student population at the school. So similar populations. When I, when I think about, I'm sorry.
But would that be possible, like building capacities are different? Likely on Heights can only hold, what, three?
And that's, that's a little bit of my point. So if we have a couple of facilities that we're using that have smaller enrollment and other schools that are, have, you know, poor capacity for enrollment, you're not gonna ever have it exactly matched up in all of this. And so the same number of students at Southwest Elementary School would have a macro, the building might be full, whereas you're at one of the newer elementary schools, the building is not even close to being full on that. But it's not like the building that's not close to being full, that we're gonna lower class sizes immensely at that school and not at Southwest. So there's a whole lot of discussion that goes into those things. We have very thoughtful ways to, to staff our schools, and it's not necessarily just based on your facility size. But Matt, one thing that we've talked about is, so let's say we're looking at that number of eight hundred. And I'd say that we're in a good position at, you know, seven hundred and fifty students each one of our campuses that can hold eight hundred. Because we know eight hundred is mythical, I mean, it's a hundred percent, nothing runs at a hundred percent. But even then, you're still off balance, because in one campus, you could have a third grade class that is very small, as part of that seven hundred and fifty.
That's right.
And down the road, the other campus could have a third grade class that is massive. And so, same number of people, different needs at those campuses though, because of class sizes of each one of them.
You got it, and I think that's important to remember. So when we, when we talk about balancing, it is not class size, we're talking about similar numbers of students in each school, not necessarily by classroom.
See, to me, Matt, we, we kind of ran into this. Where if you just had growth, probably the first two bullet points you would have under growth would be optimizing space and capacity and how you would balance things. You could really, conceptually, to me, all, all, all three of those things have to do with growth. And then there's, there's a plan that goes into dealing with the growth that, that, that talks about space, talks about to balance the classes. And we know some sections are gonna be bigger, some years than others, and we move those around. But to me, to streamline things a little bit, I think you could easily umbrella all three of those things into one, to one.
I'll, I'll try a second attempt at this too, because then, on the optimized spacing capacity, I'll give you an example that I think might make sense. So, a class, a, a school that has an enrollment of eight hundred or seven ninety-two, we use both of those numbers here in our system. That basically would be thirty-six classrooms, six at every grade level and all of them full. That's how you get to eight hundred. And so, let's say we had three campuses that all had those thirty-six classrooms. In one campus, you had a designated space for your special programs, your maker space, your motor lab, where you could actually get to thirty-six instructional classrooms, and you could still have all the other supported programs that need to take place. Let's say, school B, you have thirty-six classrooms, but you need to use four of those classrooms for special programs, maker space, motor lab. So in essence, you only have thirty-two classrooms at that school because of the other programs you want to support. And let's say campus C has the same thirty-six classrooms, and they have no space for any programs. So you kind of either have to make a decision, are we gonna use a classroom for each one of those programs? Or are we not gonna offer those programs at that school? So, that's really how the optimizing space and capacity makes sense to me, as they're articulated.
So it has more to do with the special programs?
It has, it has to do with offering special programs and other offerings as well. It could be, we, we want a robotics room on that campus, or we want a maker space on that campus, or something along those lines as well.
Or AIMS, dyslexia labs.
Yes.
Right, things like that.
Yeah.
So I get it now.
That's kind of where I'm visiting that the difference in that is. We've got the same thirty-six core classrooms, what else do we need to utilize?
So, going back to that, when y'all are taking a look at special programs, of course, you're trying to get geographically where we're balancing our special program offerings that we have, right? You don't want to have all your AIMS programs on one side of town, you don't want to have all of your, whatever the, the other program is on the other side of town. So you already, you're already kind of designating on each campus. And then you get into the challenge of Leon Heights, Miller Heights, Southwest, of having fewer classrooms on the campuses to deal with. So I, I see where you're talking about the optimization, but shouldn't you pick those programs first? And then worry about the numbers secondly, when you're looking at doing boundaries?
Yeah.
Because you need to say, okay, on this, in this side of town, we need to have two AIMS programs, we need to have two of the other programs. Have two of these, so you put those in place classroom-wise, and then we start worrying about numbers at that point, right?
Yeah, a couple of things on that. I think the challenge of that is, it depends on the individual student needs. So when we have a growing district like we have, we have many students moving in, we don't know the student needs until we get there. So you can't just easily say, hey, this is gonna be, this is gonna cover all AIMS needs in the southwest part of our school district. Because a lot of it depends on who's coming to your school next year, and who's, who's involved in your school system.
So it's always a movement target.
It is a little bit of a movement target. The other piece of that is, is that whenever you get to a population large enough, you try and keep students in their neighborhood schools as well. Why? Because that's usually where the family has built a social network to help them with specific student needs, where they know the kids in their neighborhood and the families in their neighborhood too. And so, that one's a little tricky, because you have the, a growing population. We all know our special education population has grown significantly in the past few years. And students with significant need in our system, you can't predict who's going to come enroll in your school district, and they're growing by seven hundred kids a year. You all know those things. So, that's where that becomes a little bit of a challenge sometimes, because you get, we use Chisholm Trail Elementary School and stuff. We know the growth that it's been going there. If they have a population of students that move into Chisholm Trail's attendance boundaries that have significant special needs, you may put them far over capacity what they can handle in an AIMS program or in a, in a functional academics type program.
The conversations I've been involved on, Ian, and Jennifer can correct, is the first thing is there's a student need in that attendance zone, then the first thing we try to do is have that program there for those students. And then the second consideration would be, do we have space to, to do it? So the first consideration always is, if there's a need for students that reside in that zone, then we want to try to staff that program anytime we can. So, some of the input that we've gotten, this is from our long-range facilities planning committee, went through a prioritization exercise, our district-wide educational improvement council, or D-WIC, went through a prioritization exercise, and our facilities committee. We had an in-depth conversation with them back a couple of months ago, and these were the top three parameters that came out of those discussions. Growth, neighborhood unity, and optimized spacing capacity. So we just kind of wanted y'all to see some of the community feedback that we've gotten so far from different groups. But this is probably represents a, the long-range facilities planning committee, a large group of community members, parents, the teachers, D-WIC, all educators from around the district and all of our multiple campuses, and then y'all know our board facilities committee members as well. We did a, a parent thought exchange, we only sent this out to parents, because parents and families are gonna be impacted the most, and we were very pleased with the response we got. Eight hundred and ninety-nine participants, two hundred and twenty-eight different thoughts, sixty-six ninety-seven rankings. And there were, we didn't just ask them to, to prioritize attendance boundaries, we just said, what, as a family in Milton ISD, what's most important to you as we go through this process? This is the, the Wordle, Wordle or the Wordogram, and you can see a lot of comments there about closest, close, home, sizes. So there's a lot of comments about keeping neighborhoods together, sending kids to the closest campus to their home, not having a lot of distance between, there was a lot of things, lots of comments about keeping students with special needs in a, in a setting where it's consistent for them. And then there was also a lot about, a lot of comments about wanting their kids to stay at the campus that they're currently assigned to. Those done, that doesn't figure into as much of the prioritization discussion, it will be more into the transition plan discussion, and we'll bring back to you guys later. But I don't expect y'all to be able to read these, but I just wanted to talk to you briefly. The top eight thoughts all had to deal with proximity to campus to the school. So basically, neighborhood schools. One, send distance travel to school. Two is, it needs to be based on what school is closest to our home. Three is keep children as close to home as possible. Four is keep neighborhood kids together. Five is traffic and distance to school. You can kind of see the theme there. So as you looked at the top themes, and these are the ones that had the, they ranked them on a five-star scale, and all of these were four-point-four or four-point-three stars. So, as you get further away from that, that's where you see things about, you see some balancing, you see some friends, you see campus programs and overcrowding. But the, the real thing that seemed to resonate most with the thoughts that came out were about proximity and keeping kids closest to their home as we possibly can.
Now, when we did this the last time, looking at number two, and I can see things far away, I just can't see things right in front of me. But, did we do that for people?
We did. We were really mindful, I thought, of not making Miller Heights kids go all the way out to LBS anymore and bringing them closer in, and making sure that we split up, you know? But we made it, we tried to make it as equitable as possible. I do recall that that was a huge concern, was that.
So if we drew the lines, the kids in fourth grade, which is example, and they want to finish fifth grade at their elementary school, even though they would be moved to a different school, even if they did have a sibling issue, we said, go ahead and stay.
I came into this role, I shouldn't know the answer to that, but I came into this role after those decisions have been made, so I don't remember at all. For middle school and high school, we did it grandfathered.
I did.
But I, for elementary kids, I, I can get the answer to that, and I'll, I'll get the answer to that.
I was under the impression that you had done that.
At the lower level? And because of UIL things, at the upper levels, or sports things, or extra curriculars.
And we were opening two new schools that created random attendance spaces.
Yeah, we did, and then the numbers, I was trying to remember, because we did do that for, you know, kids that were already enrolled in that, that we redrew the lines, and I just remember, I don't remember exactly how it was done, but I do remember, it was a, it was a big deal. We spent a lot of time to make sure we did it. In the end, the numbers really weren't even there, if that makes sense. We didn't have the big number that we thought would be like, oh, I want to grandfather my kids here, it really didn't happen that much.
It wasn't a big request.
No, it was there, it was available.
Yeah.
But it wasn't, it didn't have to be a big request that we thought it was gonna be. Because I want to say that, I, I want to say Lakewood Elementary may have been one of the ones that was kind of caught the crossfire on that one, and it ended up being an admission.
Okay.
So, I want, we want to keep the discussion going. Our long-range facilities planning team got together some brainstorming samples. And so, we divided up into five groups, there were about six or seven people in each group, and we asked them to, we, we weren't there to say, select a parameter and try to build it off that parameter, we just said, let's work through some ideas on what new attendance boundaries could look like on our north and south sides of town. We sent no ideas of that idea, come up with, with how you would do it within your group, and throw some ideas out there, and let's see how it looks. And then they each sat down with our team from Zonda, and they put those ideas into the software that they had. So we created five draft prototypes. And we want to be clear about one thing, these are not proposals. These aren't the proposals that we'll take out to our community, that we'll refine with our staff, or that we will ultimately bring to you. But there may be components in these prototypes that may end up in the proposals. But we want to take a, a few minutes and kind of let y'all have a look at those, and get you thinking about it from a parameter standpoint. So the proposals for consideration will not be developed until after we adopt parameters tonight. So what we're gonna do for the next few minutes, and we're doing really well on time, we're gonna have about five minutes or less for this conversation, is, each of you are partnered with a cabinet member or executive team member, and Keith Cook and Jennifer are gonna come up and help with Manuel Janet. I'm gonna give you a couple of these, these prototypes, these drafts. Like I say, nothing is set in a tunnel, in, in stone on this, but what we want to do is, look through these and kind of think of it from the lens of, what do you notice about this plan? What changes have occurred from the, from our, our, our current attendance boundaries as we opened two new schools and we increase in Southwest? What does it look like it impacts? There's a chart on the back that would show you what the demographer, the demographer estimates would look like with this particular plan. And then do you see the concerns about it, or what parameters does it look like they use? You're just gonna have about a five-minute discussion about what you see, and you're only gonna have one map to look at. So there's not gonna be an overload of information, so.
Again, the map is sample.
It doesn't matter which one. Yeah, these are not proposals, these are just, these are just some samples.
Mike, would you have the original attendance round stat?
I mean, I have it right here. Here's a copy of the attendance in this battery, so you can look and see the differences easily from here to the turn. Up five minutes, and there's a, there's a full district map, and there's zoomed-in maps as you flip the pages. So you can see them zoomed in a little bit better. The second and third pages have them zoomed in. That was the group that came up with this, they should all go there, but they, they.
If you split from a feeder pattern standpoint, I feel like you've got to split with enough, like you don't want to do like five kids, right? Like it's got to have enough volume to still maintain some of the relationships.
I know, buddy, the fifth grader, he's, I mean, I've already heard some anxious comments about where friends are going, and I think I've even heard that in, in the past prior year. So I think if you talk to elementary students, that's, that's important to them, that they could stay together, because then it becomes a, well, I guess we're not going to be friends anymore, because you're going here and I'm going here. I know they end up fine in the end, but if you talk to an elementary student, that's probably, I'd say.
Y'all ready to rank?
I think if it's okay, if we can leave them the way they are right now, so they're, to avoid any confusion about overlapping them, let's go ahead and rank this way, and then let's.
So you're going to have five dots. Put the, the, the one of the eight that you feel is the top priority, put your five, then your four, three, two, and one. You won't have a dot for every sign, you'll only rank the top five that you have, and then Melinda and, and Deanne are going to help us tally these, and then we'll kind of see where the numbers lie.
One more time, your, your number one thing, you put a five on it. Okay? Your number one thing, the most important.
Wait to make it confusing.
You put a five on it.
Okay, so number one is not number one.
Correct.
Number one is number five.
The more points the better.
Points, thank you.
The higher score of the entire line.
That makes more sense. Oh, number seven on here. I know, she's doing, making her notes.
What were Tom Brady?
He's going to think about it for a while.
Big Jackson.
Oh wait, no, numbers, okay.
That's good, I think we should have turned on there and been like.
That equals nine.
Are you going to be that, that guy?
Thank you.
Could have just spit out a bunch of numbers and see if they get it right.
No, I was right, I was right.
I can't see those. All right, we do have to get moving.
Yes. So the last thing we're going to do is total these, put them in order, and see where the point totals fall off, and see if we're all in agreement on where the drop, where the fall line is.
Then we're going to have heated debates about which ones are better.
No, we're going to listen to jazz. We are going to listen to jazz. We're going to listen to jazz. We need a little jazz band in our lives right now.
Neighborhood unity.
The electrical spirit.
Number four is Family Impact. Number five is feeder pattern alignment, and if you'll, if you'll join us too, because they're tied.
Me too.
Family Impact, and this one is feeder pattern alignment, and then if you'll just kind of wrap it over here. And then, the next one is.
Optimize spacing capacity.
Above Family Impact. Because you have to. Next one is dots. Balancing. And the traffic impact. And if you'll put.
We love to all eat them, so. We'd love to all eat them, so. This is going to be narrowed down.
Can y'all run the points beside them real quick, yeah, so we can see where the drop is?
It was twenty, seventeen.
You got to be able to run it.
Twenty, seventeen, sixteen, ties at fourteen, twelve, nine, and three. So what we said was the natural break, weapon line would probably be at dropping off six, seven, eight.
Okay, so to be clear, what we will be bringing forward to you tonight, based on those results, would be the top, those top five in that order, in saying that as we develop out our models or our proposals, that those would be the primary, as we get to those areas where we've got to make a decision on them, and the different models, we would use those parameters in that order of prioritizing. The growth would be a top consideration, and then we would work down the list, and that would be the top five things. Is everybody in agreement with that? Because that's what we'll bring forward as an action item tonight.
There being no authority business means a nerd at six o'clock. Right on time. Do a good job. You got a jazz band performing in just a couple minutes over there. Good job, Michael.
Do you need me to gather these?
All right. So are you from here?
No, Sarah, I'm from Arlington.
Okay, so you're not related to Dave Quark?
No, I don't know Dave.
Bob, it's just, it's not a, you know, it's not a real compliment, I'd say.
It's not.